We're all full up in Nashville, we've got plenty of waiters, we can send you to Salina this week.
Yeah.
You ready Dean?
Yep, we'll let Mr. Schneider get commenced.
Come right over here.
Be moved over.
Gosh, I'm still Republican, right?
Yeah, well this is the right. What's the right? That's the liberal, that's the left.
Okay, it's time for the Salina, City of Salina Planning Commission to come to order here on September 2nd, 2008. Dean, are there any changes that we should...
Those three items will occur as they're on the printed agenda.
Okay, well then proceed with item number one, approval of the regular minutes of August 19.
I move the approval of the minutes of August 19.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes, aye.
Passed, let's go to two. Application number Z96-8H filed by Design and Engineering Incorporated on the behalf of Logan's Roadhouse Restaurants requesting final site plan approval for a proposed restaurant on Lot 5 and a portion of Lot 6, Block 1 of the Riffle addition to the City of Salina, Kansas, also known as 3050 Riffle Drive. Staff report, Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hers and I are going to combine on this report, he's going to address site landscaping and zerescaping, but by way of background, the plating and zoning on what is known as the Riffle addition dates back to 1996. And the Planning Commission reviewed preliminary plats and rezoning and then final plat applications for this 19 acre tract that's located at the southwest corner of Schilling Road and South 9th Street. City Commission officially rezoned the property on February 3rd, 1997. This is a planned commercial district due to its gateway location into the community and that means that final site plans for each individual lot must be approved by the Planning Commission before building permits are issued. This map here gives you a pretty good summary of what has occurred to date. This is the eighth request that the Planning Commission has reviewed for one of the platted lots in the subdivision. There's a Hampton Inn and a courtyard by Marriott Hotel, there's a quick shop convenience store, a tractor supply company store, and three current restaurants, Wendy's, Taco Bueno, and Popeyes. Site plans for those were reviewed by the Planning Commission before development commenced. So you may or may not remember, there was a site plan submitted for this property, this same property, in 2004, and that was for construction of a Lazy Boy Furniture Gallery on this same property. That plan was approved by the Planning Commission but the project itself never went forward and this particular site has remained vacant since that time. What we have is, we have a platted Lot 5 and 6 here, the boundary line for Lot 6 is here. These two lots have been purchased by Triple B LLC out of Wichita. And then the shaded area you see here is the lease site, the site that Logan's Roadhouse Restaurants is proposing to lease from Triple B LLC. So their site plan that you have in your packets includes Lot 5 and a portion of Lot 6 and the Riffle addition at southwest corner. This is Zone C7, which is planned highway commercial. Just a brief overview, the building footprint that's being looked at here would be a 6,500 square foot restaurant building. It would have indoor dining area only and seating for 237 people. The building footprint would be 98 by 72, and I think one thing you would note from your elevation drawings and from the site plan is that Logan's desire is to orient the building to face west towards I-135. And so the primary parking areas would be south, north, and the west sides of the building. Vehicle access or customer access would be from Riffle Drive. So our total site that we're looking at here is about 2.93 acres, but if you subtract out pond area, which is, there's detention basin that's located and fans out in this area here, the drainage comes here and then this becomes the, kind of an L-shaped detention basin. When you subtract that out from the lease site, they really have about 1.88 acres that's usable. So their building coverage of that's only a little over 5%. And 42% would be paving and drives and then the remainder would be open space or green space, but that would include the pond area. As we noted, the original developer here was Norman Riffle. He owned these lots until recently when Triple B LLC purchased the property. They are leasing, as it said, a portion of that. The, one item of concern is just what there is left here and is that a usable piece in terms of future use or development? We'll get into that in a little more detail, but you can see from the plan here that this property has got pond here and overhead transmission lines here, and so there's not a lot of usable area. There's also some challenges with access from Riffle Drive. So if you're familiar with the site, the plan is to reverse the orientation of the building and the building would be, have the front door facing I-135 instead of Riffle and the rear would face Riffle Drive. That's somewhat comparable to Applebee's where at Applebee's their driveways and access are from Marketplace, that's their address, but the front door to Applebee's faces 9th Street and the rear of the building faces Marketplace. So this is somewhat similar in that regard in that the front of the building would be oriented towards the interstate and the back towards Riffle Drive. So our main entry would be on the west side of the building. Rear service area, trash enclosure, those types of things would be on the Riffle Drive side. So this is Riffle Drive looking east, the interstate is over here, the main entrance would be on the interstate side of the building. There'd be about 78 feet from Riffle Drive to where the building starts. There'd be a large separation between the rear of the building and the interstate due to the detention basin. I think you have some elevations there, John. This is what it would look like from I-135 and then this view here is what you would see from Riffle Drive with a kind of a service entrance there being the only opening. On the north and south facades, for the dining area, there would be windows and then the rear portion would not have windows. They're talking about using horizontal cedar lap siding for their exterior appearance. Overall, the restaurant would be 20 foot tall, there would be a parapet at the front entrance that would be slightly taller than that. The site plan that we're being asked to review shows 124 paved parking spaces. This includes five handicapped accessible spaces near the front entrance. This calculates out to about one space for every 24 square feet of dining area or one space for every two persons. The City of Salina's minimum requirements are one space for 50 square feet or one space for every three persons based on the dining area. And so our calculation, we came up with a minimum requirement of 79 spaces. They're proposing 124 and we made mention in there of a cap or maximum that was established by the City Commission back in the 1990s when there was concern about overbuilding of parking contributing to flooding. And what the City Commission asked was that any time a commercial use or venture proposes more than 25% over the minimum amount that that needed to be looked at to see if there was justification for the additional parking. I think you have there, John, the table that summarizes, and these are not all absolute comparables, but we did put this in your packet. What we've found most recently is a trend is that restaurants, for instance, Hong Kong Buffet being one, that our required parking is 89 and the provided parking is 89. And so we've had some others that were just right at or barely over. We also have two cases here that are probably more similar to this. You have Applebee's where they have 59% more spaces than our minimum and Tucson's which would probably be most comparable to this. The other thing that has to enter into those thoughts is in the case of places like Chili's and IHOP's, they are on a mall site and they have opportunity to have shared parking or overflow parking with the mall. And one thing that makes this site different is that it is a standalone site, it is not a mall site or a place where there would be shared or overflow parking. It's a standalone site and Logan's will have to provide all their own parking without the ability to have sharing or overflow. So this is a planned commercial district and because of that, the Planning Commission has the authority to approve deviations from standards including standard parking requirements. So that is something that you can review, discuss, and approve today. As far as the access itself, we're looking at two driveways from Riffle Drive. Most of the parking is located either beside or on the west side of the building. As far as drainage, this is very well situated for drainage because it's right next to the detention pond for the Riffle addition. And so the very front part of the site will drain out to Riffle Drive, it will drain to inlets and back into the pond. And then the parking lot itself will drain directly into the detention basin. Essentially, there'll be collection points here and here that'll take the water right into the pond. Out front, this water goes to an inlet here and then comes back into the pond. The water eventually flows under I-135 and over to Dry Creek. There is a Property Owners Association that's been formed here and so each of the owners that sends water to that pond would be responsible for sharing and the mowing, maintaining of that pond, so it's not just a Logan's or Triple B responsibility because they own the lot. We are well served with water and sewer lines. As far as their proposed signage, I think we have elevations of that, don't we, John? What they're proposing is on the west or the I-135 portion of the site, on the west edge of the parking lot, they're proposing a single pole sign. That pole sign as proposed would be 50 feet in height and would contain 150 square feet of sign area. They're also looking at four additional wall signs that would provide wall mounted signs on each of the four faces of the building. And the signings that they have proposed would fall within the sign area allocation allowed, so they do not need an exception for anything related to signage. The other item, I'm going to let Dustin discuss. This is a unique site because for sign purposes and other purposes, it has two front yards. We consider I-135 and have considered it for landscaping and signage as a front yard. And with the presence of the pond there, it's somewhat challenging to have a traditional front yard along I-135, so I'm going to have Dustin describe their landscape plan for you.
As Mr. Ender said, this is a somewhat unique site, so what I've done is I've prepared a landscaping summary for you to look at, try and help mitigate any confusion as we go along here. When we look at landscaping, we look at four major components. We look at the front yard landscaping, which is the landscaping that takes place in the front 25 feet of the property that's adjacent to any public or private roads. We look at the parking lot screening, which is the screening of any of the cars in the parking lot. We look at buffers from residential uses or non-commercial uses. And then lastly, we look at landscaping islands. The first two of the four that are probably the easiest, and we'll tackle those first simply because they're easiest, are the parking lot screening and the buffers. First off, we don't need any buffer since there are no residential properties adjacent to this. Everything in the surrounding area is commercial and so we're not going to be looking at any required buffering from adjacent sites. The parking lot screening, I don't know if we have a landscape plan up there.
We're doing the packet, but no.
Okay, we don't, we don't have one up here. In your packet, you'll see a landscape plan that details a lot of plantings, several shrubs and trees within this front 25 feet. We would consider that adequate for the parking lot screening. So then when we look at the front yard landscaping, in this instance, as Dean said, we have two frontages. We have the Riffle Drive front and we also have the I-135 front. And when we break that down, we have 185 feet of frontage on Riffle Drive and because of the depth of the lot, we are required to have 20 square feet per lineal foot of frontage. So that means if you take 185 times 20 square feet, that comes up to an aggregate sum of 3,700 square feet. What the developer has proposed in the front yard along Riffle Drive is 3,409 square feet. But since we have two frontages, we do have a 30% reduction, which reduces that 3,700 square feet to 2,590. So when we look at the reduction, what that does is it makes that 3,409 adequate for the front yard along Riffle. Now along I-135, we do have some restrictions because of the pond that we see towards the rear along I-135. We have a detention area and a drainage easement that starts out at 20 feet along the northwest corner and as it moves down, it gradually slopes out to 120 feet. So that greatly reduces the area in which the developer can use for landscaping. And what they've done is they've constructed or proposed basically a five-foot ribbon along this west edge for Bermuda grass, but they don't have any plantings in the area. Along the Riffle Drive site, or edge of the development of the site, they proposed 12 tree units, which they're required to have seven, so they're exceeding the minimum requirement along the Riffle side, but along the I-135 side, they are deficient to a certain amount. Now, because the I-135 frontage is so wide compared to the Riffle side, they have 509 feet of frontage along I-135, take that times 20 square feet, they're required to have, with their reduction, the 30% reduction, 7,112 square feet. What the developer has proposed is 2,238 square feet, so they're well short of what they would normally be required. But again, it is a unique site where we have kind of a pie-shaped lot with a narrow front and a wide backside with this detention pond back here. So they are short on what we would require as far as front yard landscaping. But before we get too far into that, I want to also look at the landscaping on the interior of the site or what we would consider landscaping islands in their parking lot, because as we'll see, that kind of may or may not make up for the lack of frontage on I-135. For the parking lot islands, we require 5% of the whole total paved area to be constructed or proposed as parking lot islands. The total paving area for this site is 54,154 square feet, which you take 5% of that, you're dealing with a number that is around 2,700 square feet. What the developer has proposed is 7,186 square feet, which is 13% of the total paved area. So if you see here, this area that's kind of, I don't know what shape you would call that, triangular shape of some sort with the peninsulas here, that would all be considered a parking lot island. We have these peninsulas here that jotted out, here, here, there's a large landscape area to the northwest of the building and a few spaces around the perimeter in which they have proposed landscaping. And in your packet, you'll notice on the landscape plan that there are seven shade trees distributed throughout the parking lot in various parking lot islands. So as we go to the last page of the summary sheet, we have a breakdown of what's required in the front yards as well as what's required in the parking lot islands and we aggregate those and take a look and compare how that would weigh if they, if the distribution of the landscape would be a little bit different, if we would have had more landscaping along I-135 and less landscaping within the interior. So as it stands now, the Riffle Drive frontage is required to have 2,590 square feet, they're proposing 3,409 square feet, so they've exceeded their required landscaping there. The I-130 frontage, I-135 frontage is required to have 7,112 square feet, they're proposing 2,238 square feet, which as you can see, that's where they're primarily short. And then in their parking lot islands, they're required to have 2,708 square feet and they're proposing 7,186 square feet. And then when you look at the summations of both of them, you'll notice that they do exceed the total landscaping by a little over 400 square feet. So the total landscaping is there on the property, it's just distributed different than what we would normally require on most sites. Then when you look at the tree units associated with those square footages, we'll notice that in the front yard along Riffle, they are proposing, or they're required to have five tree units, they're proposing 12. Along I-135, they're required to have 14 tree units, they're not proposing any in that area. And the parking lot islands, it's, the plantings are discretionary as long as they meet the materials that we have listed. In other words, as long as the trees that they select are part of the recommended tree list, that is what we look for. We don't require any specific number of tree units in the parking lot islands. What they propose is 14 tree units, seven shade trees, seven ornamental trees, and 45 shrubs. So in total, they're required to have 19 tree units and they're proposing 26. So this is a unique site where on its face, it does not exactly meet the requirements of the code, but it certainly meets the intent in the fact that they have exceeded the requirements for their total landscaping and they also has exceeded the requirements for their tree proposals. The one thing I think we would like to see as staff in order to more so meet the intent of what the code is looking for, is to maybe see some trees proposed along the east, or excuse me, the northwest area or the area behind the pond, but yet between the parking lot and the pond on the northwest side, there's some landscape islands here and there's the strip that they've proposed. Maybe we can get some trees or some kind of smaller ornamental trees or shrubs or something in there to dress up that frontage.
Do you want John to do the courtyard by Marriott?
What's that?
Would you have John show the courtyard?
If you could show the courtyard by Marriott, John. And this is an example of what Marriott did and kind of what we're looking for, because this is the property directly to the north and we would like to see something done to match this area. See, this is north.
That's where they match up, right over there.
This here. So this area here is what the, to the top of the page, on the top of this plan, is what the courtyard by Marriott looks like along its I-135 frontage. And currently, the Logan's Roadhouse plan doesn't have any trees, so it's, it is somewhat of a mismatch when you're along that frontage. But again, we do have that easement to deal with that we can't plant in, but we can plant, what we're proposing is that there's some plantings between that easement and between the parking lot area along that west front. That was kind of confusing, there's a lot to digest there. Is there any questions?
You say you can't plant in the easement?
Well, it's not something...
About this drainage area here, you cannot plant beyond this, what do you call it, five-foot strip that's crosshatched on our landscape plan?
Right, because that's both a utility and drainage easement and so we don't want any interference with any utilities or water impedance of any kind, so we would prefer to stay out of that easement with their plantings.
I think the only other thing that we would note is that there is, as part of the overall screening buffering plan, there's a trash enclosure that's shown on the east side and it would have solid enclosures on two sides and then would have gates that would open and face the Riffle Drive side, but as Dustin pointed out, with the plantings that are being proposed along Riffle Drive, that should provide some good buffering or screening from that trash enclosure area. So in summary, your role today is to look at the site plan, the landscape plan, the proposed signage and building elevations. We have reviewed those for you and on your behalf and looked at parking, the total number of spaces, and landscaping, the distribution, although the overall requirements are met as two areas that don't strictly comply but are within your discretion to approve today. So you may approve or disapprove the plans as submitted. You could approve them subject to certain revisions or conditions. You could recommend that the plans submitted today be resubmitted after substantial revisions are done and resubmitted. The recommendation we have is, we have a representative from Logan's here. I think our first item or site issue has been addressed from the standpoint, has been indicated to us that Triple B LLC will be looking to provide a, or secure a tenant for the remainder of Lot 6. And I think all you could ask Logan's to do, they have done, which is, they're somewhat problematic to get access across here independently into this site, but they have provided a way here to get good access into that site if there's another tenant or user there. One thing we would ask the Logan's representative to address is, we understand this would be close to their 200th restaurant location, so they have quite a bit of experience with this particular restaurant sizing and what their parking needs are and to have them address that the experience and the need is for 124 parking spaces to confirm that. And then it would be at your discretion to approve the plan, the landscape plan as submitted or request that either by redistribution or by supplementation that, this is the actual real frontage with I-135, that something be done with a couple tree units there to make that more consistent with the courtyard by Marriott to the north. But if those two items are addressed to your satisfaction, then our recommendation would be to approve the site development plan, landscape plan and sign and building elevation drawings for this project. With that, I'd be available for any questions, or we do have a representative from Logan's here.
Thank you, Dean. Any questions of staff before we go to the representative from Logan's? Okay, we'd like to hear from representative from Logan's. If you'd state your name and address.
My name's Chris Miles and it's 3011 Armory Drive, Nashville, Tennessee. And I'm just here to provide you with any information that you would like to know. And I'm just here to provide you with any information that you would like to know. As for the parking, we usually typically ask for about 115 to 125 parks, even with cross-easement parking, when we have a shared parking. Of course, this one will not be in any kind of mall, or we won't have the possibility of getting any cross-parking easements. So history shows that we need that many parks. I mean, it's just, it's typical that we have around 120, 125 parks for each of our restaurants, and as I said before, we have about 200 of those.
How does this restaurant size compare to the one you have in Wichita on May's Road?
I believe there's two different prototypes in Wichita. One of them, I believe, is the RH-72, which is a 7,200 square foot building, and then the other one is this exact prototype, the 6,500 square foot.
So your past experience at these other sites is that you need this many parking spaces?
We just-
Can you explain that, why that might be?
When we don't, well, just from marketing points, when you don't have that parking, when you're full, the first thing you say is, when you pull up, wow, man, this place is packed, you know? We're going to be on a wait for an hour, we're going to be awake for an hour and a half. You know, if you've got a couple of extra open parking spots, it's going to be more likely that somebody's going to stop and walk in and actually see what the wait time is, rather than just assuming that it's going to be the typical hour, hour and a half. So that's just, like I said, history shows that it's always worked for us.
Well, you're paying for the parking, you're entitled to it, of course, I'm concerned.
Yeah, if you permit it, we'll pay for it, for sure.
I thought it was interesting, the correlation with Applebee's, because I think they're often full, and it seems that it's almost the same percentage over Applebee's as you're asking for. IHOP, I've several times had to park in, I don't know if that's David's, or whatever next door, it seems, and maybe there are parking spaces that are behind, or that I'm not aware of, but-
Well, one reason, we had a similar case with the Board of Zoning Appeals recently. One reason we put that table together is you are all restaurant patrons, you have your own experiences at various places, and so we thought if we put that into a table form, you could see that places like Tucson's and Applebee's have far over the minimum amount, but there still could be a perception of crowding or unavailable spaces there. So that was there for you to exercise your judgment on whether this is really an overage or that our minimums are very minimal, and we are of a mind that our minimums are pretty minimal. You know, they are bare minimums, but again, that doesn't necessarily, they meet the need, it just means that that's a bare minimum that you have to start with.
Would you be opposed to either shifting some of your landscape materials to that area that I'm concerned?
I don't think that would be a problem. Actually, what I was looking at too, is the, there, I believe the sign is in the location. I guess it's just south?
It's in the corner there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know that's where it's proposed there, I'm looking at a-
I think it's proposed here in-
Yes, that's what I was about to say.
We want to make sure we have the right one, that we had one plan where the sign was proposed there, and we had one up in the corner.
If we were going to put the landscaping, the additional trees, we would want to propose the sign in the other location, I'm sure, yeah.
Yeah, that would make sense, that space wasn't serving two purposes. But, so just for the commission's information, we had two versions of this plan. One showed it where Dustin's pointing it there, which it's a perfectly suitable location. The other one had it in the corner. Both of those would be appropriate, but if the idea was that it's that northwest corner where you abut courtyard by Marriott to match up, we would agree that it would be better to move the sign there and to use that corner for any plantings, so then we're not competing for space. And so we're, either of those two locations, we think would be very suitable for the sign. And so I think as long as we know that it could be either of those two spots, then I think we would have some flexibility there.
And I appreciate the density of the plantings along Riffle, because I think to be facing the back-
Yeah, that's, I think that was the-
-of a property, it's nice to have that looking traffic.
That screening, yeah, the screening of the back of the building.
The other thing that Dustin did not go into in detail, but the, most of these plantings have been identified, would mean our definition of zero scaping, so that we are moving in that direction with this plan.
I find it interesting that you're facing the building to I-135. Do you have a philosophy that speaks to that, as opposed to facing Riffle Drive?
I'm assuming that it was, you're definitely going to have more traffic along I-35. And, you know, looking at the back of the building, our, I guess you would say, our aura, our motto is a lively spirit, you know? You want to see the front of that building, you want to see what's going on inside. We have neons inside that decorate the building, you can see that through the windows, and, you know, just feel free, you know? Feel free to come, relax, enjoy your dining experience. And like you said, all those windows on the front, you can see right through there, we have murals up on the inside of the walls, it's all rough-sawn cedar inside, many neons, beer neons, other neons, and just, you know, being able to see that from the most traffic possible, and see, you know, that it is a free lively spirit in there, and, you know, it looks like a good time to go in there and dine. It all has to do with the traffic.
During the summer with the sun shining in there, that gets to be real warm behind those windows.
Well, we do shade the bottom windows, and we've had that experience, that problem with past experiences. The transom windows, the two narrow, narrow windows just above the larger windows, we do shade those. So we tint that glass, and then of course, all the exterior windows have shades, yeah, blinds.
I bet you figured it out.
Yeah, 200 restaurants in, you got her under control, yeah.
Are we satisfied with concern number one regarding the remainder of Lot Number 6? Is there room for a small restaurant on there with that easement and the power line?
Well, the, we'll say the buildable area is smaller than the nominal leftover area, but what you have basically is you have this area inside this box is available, so you're looking, we were actually more concerned about the ability to access. We've got some storm sewer inlets and some other things out here, so by the plan being amended by Logan's to show that cross-drive coming off their drive, we think that addresses the access. And then the other concern that we had was that the buyers would not buy the whole thing and leave this behind as an orphan. But this is not a split, it's, the owner owns lots five and six, and so they'll be responsible for finding their own tenant for the remainder of six. So we think that is adequately addressed by the way it was purchased and by this driveway being provided.
What about the light plan?
We have an exterior lighting plan. What we're requesting is just a, the cut sheets to confirm that the type of fixtures proposed are the downcast shoebox type lighting. And so we, usually the manufacturer can furnish those, just to confirm. The pole height we're talking about here is between 20 and 25 feet of pole height, that's perfectly consistent with what we have in the surrounding area, as is the, we think the intent is for downcast lighting, we just wanted to confirm what the fixtures would actually be. And then the other item that we discussed with Mr. Miles before the meeting, as far as the stormwater pollution prevention, erosion control, they do have a permit request in KDHE in Topeka. It's under review, but it has not been issued yet, and that is, issuance of that approval is generally what's needed to proceed with any earthwork. And so that applies to any site that's, you're disturbing more than one acre of ground. So we've agreed that we're going to get in contact with KDHE and see if we can get that issued here shortly. But that has already been applied for, it's just that we don't have it in hand yet.
Is that necessary because the water is going under the interstate?
No, that has to do with the, again, the stormwater pollution prevention and erosion, having an erosion control plan, and those are, on any site more than one acre, those are reviewed by KDHE.
Well, the city has an erosion control plan also, doesn't it?
We are deferring that review to KDHE right now.
Oh, is that, okay.
Mm-hmm, and it only applies on one acre sites or greater.
Okay, KDHE, I was reading-
Yeah, Department of Health and Environment, yes.
Okay, okay, good enough. Any other concerns that you'd like to ask Mr. Miles?
I'm concerned it's going to take you too long to get this built. Hurry up, I'm hungry.
Who would be your schedule on this, if?
Of course, we'll have to go through the building permit process, I believe, still, and-
I think we're getting closer, and one thing we'd suggest is after this meeting to go upstairs to 201 and just check in on some of the remaining items.
I can give you this, it takes about 16 weeks, 16 to 17 weeks construction time when we get started.
Sixteen to-
16 to 17, depending on weather, you know, what time of year we're doing it, places that we're doing it, but yeah, 16 to 17 weeks is usually the construction time.
How quick would you anticipate getting started, once you get approval and everything, and your permits right away?
Once we have a building permit in hand, it's usually a week.
Good.
How many do you employ in a restaurant like this?
Total staff, I want to say is close to 150, I want to say.
Wow.
Total. That's managers-
Waitresses.
Waitresses, kitchen staff, that's the whole shebang, yeah.
Will you bring-
It may be a little less than that, yeah, we have some, it varies in different places, but it's close, I believe, to that. And I could give you a more firm number, talking to our recruiting-
Let me just say it, 150 people, and he didn't even ask for $3 million? Wow!
Will you be bringing managers in, or do you hire locally, or?
We hire within, probably for GM purposes, being the general manager purposes, but definitely all staff is usually local, for sure. Maybe a couple of the managers, just to get it good and opened, maybe training some managers in the process. And like I said, that 150 might be a little high, but it's close, it's getting close to that.
Okay. Any other questions? Either Mr. Miles or Dean? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the bench, and-
From the public?
From the public. Is this a public hearing?
It is not a public hearing, it's administrative. The public hearing was when the zoning was approved, but each of these have been administrative items for the commission.
Okay. Anyone in the public want to speak? For or against? Do we need another steakhouse? Yes, we do. Okay.
I would move approval of application Z-96-8H.
I'll second it.
With the-
Oh, sorry.
-four stipulations as printed by the staff, with the understanding that Logan's is going to allow access to the remainder of Lot 6, and that they will agree to add or shift landscaping to that site adjacent to Marriott.
And I-135?
And I-135, yeah.
Okay, I'll second by second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Unanimously approved. What are we, seven today? Seven, zero.
Six.
Okay, good enough.
Six.
Six, Mr. Funk.
Six, three, you're right.
I told you I'd call it for two.
Now, item number three. Application number P-00-6B filed by Dana Morris, requesting approval of replat, of the replat of Interstate District North of I-70, addition number two, and unplatted land in order to create individual parcels for Petro II, the Blue Beacon Truck Wash, and Baird's Cafe. The subject property is 34.45 acres, tract of land located on the west side of North Ninth Street between Diamond Drive and Monarch Road. Dean?
Thank you.
We're ready for a staff report.
Are we able to take this up?
The term replat of replat means you've seen it before, and so the original plating out here dates to 1980. And this is an aerial view, overview of the site, but back in 2000, the, I think, John, you can show the original plat, back in 2000, Blue Beacon International decided that they didn't like this particular arrangement here, and what they proposed doing was bringing Monarch Road down and creating a cul-de-sac here, and wiping out that street here, Telluride. And so in 2000, the planning commission reviewed that proposed replat. It vacated Telluride Drive, that north-south street, it provided right-of-way for this cul-de-sac piece right here that was owned by the C.L. Clark Trust and not by Blue Beacon, and then it clarified and put drainage easements where they'd actually been provided at the site. There was a piece here that had been left out, and that was subsequently incorporated into the plat. And so we went from eight lots in two blocks to six lots in a single block, and we added a sliver of land on the north side from the Clark Family Trust to create the cul-de-sac for Monarch Road. We maintained access control on Ninth Street, and we got easements located where drainage was actually going. And so on August 15th, 2000, the planning commission reviewed that plat, and the only real discussion point at the time was that the staff, both planning and engineering, saw no reason for this frontage road to remain. It was not in particularly good repair, it wasn't really very heavily traveled, and it kind of dead-ended into the Petro II parking area, but Mr. Clark, one of the owners at the time, didn't agree with that, and since it takes unanimous consent to vacate a road, that remained. That was later acquired by CTM Inc., and the road right-of-way was vacated in 2005. And so that frontage road outside the plat reverted back to private ownership. The discussion that we're having now has to do with the fact that all of this parcel is owned by CTM Inc., but we've got a number of internal lot lines and easements that don't really fit with the future, and what we understood the goal to be was that we would want to create three primary ownership parcels, one for the Petro II complex, one for the Blue Beacon Truck Wash, one for Baird's Cafe. The goal would be to set the property up so that Blue Beacon could divest themselves of Petro II, but keep ownership of the remaining two lots. And so this replat would clean up and eliminate unneeded internal lot lines, provide for utility and access easements where needed for the new lot configuration. All of these have access, or actually frontage on the street. I guess if you could go to the new layout, John? That's pretty busy, but this is Baird's right here, and Baird's has frontage on Ninth Street- And Bayards has frontage on Ninth Street, but the access point is here, which is actually on the Petro Two site. So, we would need to retain a cross-access right to enter Petro Two and, and get up to this lot. It has legal frontage, but this access is restricted. The same goes for the Truck Wash, where the idea is to create a parcel for the Truck Wash. This would become Petro Two's site, but trucks entering, the Truck Wash enter in this fashion. And so, the, the idea would be to have cross-access across this lot to ensure continued access to get into the, the Truck Wash. So, the applicant would have the option of identifying those and noting those in some way on the plat. Those would be cross-access and ingress, egress easements, or they could also be developed separately. So, what they would wanna do is, is if they sold the Petro Two lot, then they would wanna retain at the site, at that time, easements across that lot, so they had continued access from the new owner. The other thing that's been kind of a stumper for the city staff is, this was all KDOT right-of-way, it was all acquired by KDOT for US-81 and, and now K-143. And for some historical reason, there was a notch purchased there. And we've been going researching and dialoguing with, with KDOT, trying to figure out where that came from and how to get rid of it, but we have not succeeded to date. But if we can, between now and when the plat's recorded, we will, we will try to get that eliminated, so we have a, a straight front there. But we have reviewed this, it's been reviewed by the county surveyor and by the local utilities. And we will, we recommend approval of it as proposed, with the caveat that if we can get KDOT to give title to that triangular notch to the owners, then that would be incorporated into the plat. We want to ensure that new lot lines are placed at least 10 feet from any existing building for fire spread and fire protection means. And then, we will want to ensure that we get cross-access easements recorded between the Petro Two lot and the others. And then, we will make sure that all the technical corrections are made to the drawing and plat certificates before the city commission would, would consider that. But we believe that the replat is in order for your consideration today and would recommend approval of that, subject to those conditions. We do have David Johnson here from BWR, who was involved in some of the survey and, and drawing preparation, and he would be able to address any questions you have, or if, if we've not completely stated the goals, but that, that's what we understood the goal was, was to get rid of the internal lot lines and, and clean those up, so that we would end up with three primary ownership parcels. So, with that, I'll address any questions that commission has. And like I said, Mr. Johnson's here also.
Okay, any questions of staff?
I'm going to declare a conflict of interest and leave the table.
Okay. Any questions of staff? Looks to me like this is more of a technical problem than a planning problem.
Well, the...
If the surveyors and engineers can figure it out, I'm all for it.
We have existing improvements on all the lots. We're not, we're not doing this in anticipation of new construction or public improvements. It's, it's kind of a surveying exercise to, to clean things up and, and put, put the ownership lines where they make sense for everybody. And this, this was the cleanest way to do that.
Mr. Johnson? Looks to me like you dealt with a difficult problem here.
Well, as Dean mentioned, the lot lines that are platted didn't really match up with the existing buildings that were there and the existing parking. And so, although I'm not an employee of Blue Beacon, as a surveyor and engineer, we, we represented him in this to help clean it up, to get the lot lines where they need to be.
Is this all within the city of Salina?
It is, yes. And it's got three different zoning classifications, but it is, it's, the city limits boundary is on the west, and the area to the north of this is also in the city. So, it's, it's, it's not just the edge. There's property north of this that's in the city also.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Johnson? Thank you. Okay, I'll bring it back to the bench. Any questions, any discussion here? We're ready for action.
I'll move acceptance of P-00-6B, subject to the four staff recommendations for, and conditions for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this request for replat. Any further discussion before we vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Very good, passed 2 for 5-0.
The quickest hundred bucks he ever made.
Okay. Item number four. Application number Z-08-8 filed by the Salina City Planning Commission, requesting an amendment of Article 10, signed Section 42-5234 to increase the allowable sign area in the I-1 Industrial Park District from one square foot of sign for every two linear feet of street frontage to one square foot for every one foot of street frontage. Staff report from Dean, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just like the previous item was cleaning up a replat, this is kind of a cleanup item of the, our sign provisions in the zoning ordinance. Maybe not as often as we should, but we, we periodically will look at different provisions of our zoning ordinance and see how they're working. We've had one, a couple that we're looking at now for parking. The, the one that came up today with Logan's would be one, where that was not of coming up too often. And then we've had two, two restaurants here proposed recently where our 25% cap was really too restrictive for what, what was being proposed. This was another case where we had a piece of property that was somewhat of an odd-shaped lot, but we've seen it come up in other matters where this is the only district, even though the I-1 is designed to be somewhat restrictive compared to our other industrial districts. And our largest area of I-1 is, is along the east side of Centennial Road, across from the K-State campus. And the idea is to have a little higher standard, particularly on the front yards, to keep that area compatible with the, the campus and what's happening there across the street. And signage is part of, of the aesthetics of an area. But we had a case recently with a mini storage complex on the east side of Centennial Road, and this formula resulted in them being able to have 54 square feet of total sign area. And so, we, we looked at that and said, well, you know, they, they might have had justification for a, to apply for a variance, but it would have been their third one. And it seemed like if they had to get a variance every time they, they put up a sign, then we should look at what the application of this in, in the day-to-day administration and compare it to our other districts, and we just think that's overly restrictive. We've given you a summary there, and it's the last page of your packet there that just summarizes. And in our commercial zones primarily, we will use building frontage for signs, but if you have a vacant lot, then you can use your street frontage. But even our most restrictive, like C2 and C3, you can have one square foot of sign area for every foot of street frontage. And so, to be consistent with that and to not have I-1 stick out so restrictively, it seemed reasonable to adjust that from one square foot for every two foot of frontage to, to one to one, which would be consistent with our C2, or C3, or downtown districts. So, our recommendation would just be to, to basically, it would double the ratio, but it would be more consistent with our other districts and be more proportional. So, if I had a lot that had 150 feet of width to it today, I would be able to have 75 feet of, of total sign area. If this were approved, that would increase that to 150, and we think that's really more proportional to what sign area to lot area is available. So, it's a, kind of a simple cleanup item, but one that we would rather amend than to just keep having people apply for variances for. Because if, if we're, have multiple variances applied for and multiple variances granted, then, then we need to look at the regulation itself and, and adjust it so that, that it's permitted and doesn't require variance, so.
Thank you. Any questions? Has the Board of Zoning Appeals generally approved those adjustments in the zoning?
Actually, the, of all the areas, and it's particularly in the area of height, but also square footage, they are, as this commission is, they are of the equal playing field mind. And so, you've, anything that relates to signs, they're pretty protective of, like this, this example of this site and area, but in, in my 20 years' experience, they have granted a grand total of one height variance and about two or three area variances for signs. But they tend to be very scrutinizing of any variances, because, you know, once you start changing the height or, or other things, then, then that encourages people in neighboring properties to do likewise. So, they've, they've been pretty good about just keeping a level playing field for everybody who wants signage. But we look at it from the standpoint of what's reasonable based on your size and your surroundings, and we think the one to two is too restrictive, and we think one to one is more reasonable and should result in fewer variances.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff? Anyone in the audience wanna talk about it?
I'm not allowed to have an opinion.
Of course you are.
Just to voice the opinion.
Okay, I'll bring it to the bench. What do you wanna do with this? Any discussion, any action?
I'll move approval of application Z-08-8.
I'll second it.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any final discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass, 6-0. Okay, we're ready for other matters.
For other matters, I discussed with Mr. Funk before the meeting that we, we could have possibly had our election of officers today, but we're going to put it off until the meeting on the 16th. And the, the reason for that is we have an opening that we may or may not be able to fill within that time. The, Mrs. Jarnovich's spot was one of the two spots. Mr. Meichel has the other for people who live outside but within three miles of the city limits. So, we have one opening, but it has to be filled by, by somebody that, that lives within that area. And the other item is that Mr. Appleby was undergoing some medical treatments, and we wanted to feel him out before that meeting of how he was feeling, how he was doing, because he is currently the commission's representative to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And so, that, the items that we'll be addressing at the next meeting will be Chairman, Vice-Chairman, who's gonna be liaison to the Heritage Commission and to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And so, we, we wanted to at least get a chance to visit with Mr. Appleby and see how he felt about that. So, we have a request for rezoning that's up on, in the vicinity of East Crawford, behind Quick Shop, and the Booker Willis Ratliff office is there to take what is zoned commercially today and convert that to zoning for residential townhomes. And we will have a final site plan coming back to you for Sonic Restaurant redevelopment on South Santa Fe. And the, we had some challenges there with a sewer line, and the, the city commission approved vacation of an alley and allowance to build it over an existing sewer line that serves the Masonic Temple. So, that allowed them to finalize their site plan, and they will be bringing that to the Planning Commission on the 16th. And so, those are the two primary items that we have scheduled along with the election of, of officers and liaisons.
Okay. No other business, we are adjourned.